I just saw the APB.
Yeah, you said you're the one who wrote it.
That's special treatment over in the county. I don't get that anywhere else.
You have to buy ice cream with dairy, claim it's over there.
Yeah.
Right.
Get you one of those ice cream cakes, Donnie gives out.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Congratulations. It is just a few minutes early, but everybody's here ready. We'll go ahead and call the June twenty-second school board meeting to order. We will have a opening session, moment of silence led by Mr. William Abston, now be followed by Bruce Hudgens and the pledge of allegiance.
Bow your heads.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, number four, we have approval of the minutes of the May eleventh board meeting. Those are supplied within your blue folders there. They're deep, this is a lengthy, has a lot of information in it, to my knowledge. I didn't see corrections that need to be made. If anybody else did, would we address those? If not, we entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I make that motion.
A motion by Rick Dodson to approve the minutes, and a second by Mr. Taylor. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Additions or deletions to the proposed agenda. Before we get started, in that blue folder, there was a notation of what was added to this agenda. We waited as long as we could about miling it out so everyone would get it, the Thursday budget amendments and that type of thing. They are supplied in that packet. Does anybody else have anything they need to add or take away from this meeting agenda? If none, we will entertain a motion to approve the June twenty-second meeting agenda. Motion by Mr. Mike Gilpatrick, and that's the second by Mr. Dolph Stahl. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The executive action items, we'll go over these collectively, so we can do them both. So many. Approval of the Tennessee Department of Education and the Tennessee Tech Grow Your Own Grant. That information is also supplied in this packet. I'm gonna have Dr. Holman discuss that a little further.
The Grow Your Own Grant is where we will receive five, we will have five student teachers in our county, and they'll be placed at the different schools in the county. And this grant pays for them, and they'll be paid as an EA. While they're working, they're also going to be completing their student teaching. What we refer to as student teaching, now it's called residency. So that's a win-win for those students, and it's a win for our students, and it's a win for the district. And it's over a two-year period.
The information of that grant is supplied in the packet as well. It doesn't go in depth, but it does give a overview. Number two on the executive action items is approval of the fiscal year twenty-two consolidated application for the IDEA and the ESEA. This is a next school year budget. That information is supplied in this packet. Anyone has any questions over that? Is there any information on that, please be sure to just type. And on these, if anybody has any questions, let's just go over them as we go through this. Number three, approval of bid from Howard Technology. That bid was twelve thousand five hundred seventy dollars for thirty Service Pros and thirty cases of Power Strips. That was the lowest bid that met the criteria for that. I think we opened up bids about two weeks ago here at the central office. Number four, approval of bid from the Vought Company for thirty-nine thousand two hundred twenty-nine dollars for calculators. This is some of the ESAR money. Those calculators will be used at the high school level.
That's right, at the high school level. That way, the whole class could have the same kind of calculator. And it's the, we'll just say, the fancy calculators that does the graphing. So it's a big nice for those teachers to have those.
The, currently, to my knowledge, for the last several years, parents and students have supplied their own, and these calculators are expensive calculators. So with the ESAR funds, Dr. Holman and his team have purchased these to help relieve some of that cost for families. If there aren't any questions, would entertain a motion to approve the executive action items? Is there a motion for that?
I move with approval.
Motion by Mr. Mitchell Stone-Sopper, and a second by Mr. Mike Gilpatrick. Mr. Johnson, could you please have a roll call vote?
Sure, yes, sir. Bruce Hudgens?
Yes.
Micah Hayes?
Yes.
Dr. Stahl?
Yes.
Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
William Abston?
Yes.
Mitch Stone-Sopper?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Charmin Hicks?
Yes.
Mike Gilpatrick?
Yes.
Motion carries. On to the consent agenda. This is a lengthy one, guys. This has a lot of budget information, a lot of year-end budget. We have, and like I said, if anybody has any questions on these, we'll go over them as we go. All this information is provided in your blue folder. Approval of the one forty-one final budget amendments, that's our internal parts budget. The one fifty-six, the debt service amendment number two. Approval of pre-K budget amendment. The ESAR two-point-oh revision. Approval of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Carl Perkins revision number three. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one IDEA partnership for student change. Approval of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one coordinated school health. I'm gonna stop right there. All these guys are just line item changes. They're not money changes, they're just line item changes to get. Yeah, to get, well, Dr. Holman calls it cleared out. To get those things in order for our year-end budget. The twenty twenty-one central cafeteria fund amendment number two. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, this will be for next school year, the IDEA preschool budget. That preschool budget is in your packet. IDEA part B, this will be the budget for next school year. These packets here, this information just come in in the last few days. Most of it, that's why you didn't receive it earlier. We waited as long as we could about sending these packets out, but trying to time the mail with the information that was given, sometimes isn't the easiest thing to do. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, the consolidated administration, is it administrative regional budget? I'm not sure I say that correctly. Twenty twenty-one to twenty-two, the Title One A. Twenty-one, twenty-two, Title Two A. Twenty-one, twenty-two, Title Four. All these are under federal programs for special ed. Ms. Johnson, can you explain what those titles are? Just briefly.
Title One is all the schools that goes, that's filed down, excuse me, the allocations for all the schools. It's their Title One monies that they use at the school level. Title Two is professional development money. And Title Four is considered well-rounded education funds. That's one of those where we kinda usually spend it on art, music, library, the places that normally don't get any funding, and Title Four.
And approval of the fiscal year twenty-two consolidated application for IDEA and ESEA. Next, on the next page, we have, we received an email from the county budget director asking us to reapprove these quarterly reports that we approved them last month. For whatever reason, county budget director asked that we have those approved. Micah Beasley with the federal programs, Ms. Johnson, Dr. Holman, myself, sat down and went through these line item by line item. Nothing has changed. No dollar bounce, nothing has changed. They just asked that we reapprove those for their records. And that quarterly report, if anybody needs it, that was already approved, is in this packet. Next, we have approval of Livingston Academy volleyball team trip. Medical leave for Mary Heather Ashburn. Medical leave for Ms. Bonnie Stapp. Medical leave of Marsha Wilson. Medical leave for Emily McLaren. Letter of resignation from Patty Hall. Letter of resignation from Ron Murphy. Is that?
Roman.
I'm sorry, I said Ron.
Roman.
Roman, I'm sorry. Letter of resignation as head football coach for Brooklyn. Letter of resignation for Michael Holbrook. Letter of retirement from Vicki Elrich. Letter of retirement from Jill McCormick. Letter of retirement from Vicky Muller. Letter of retirement from Lisa Langford. A letter of retirement from Billy Maynard. Letter of retirement from Earl Phillips. A letter of retirement from Ben Oakley. A letter of retirement from Joanne Simpson. A letter of retirement from Gary Bowles. A letter of retirement from Kate Kilman. A letter of retirement for Terry Morgan. A letter of retirement from Cindy Robbins. A letter of retirement from Vivian Sales. And a letter of retirement from Barbara Bond. If anyone has any questions about these budget amendments, all these budgets, we will entertain those.
So you said nothing changed on all of those amendments that were going on?
On the amendments, the allocations changed, but the totals. If that makes sense to you. The line items have changed, but the totals were the same.
And it's, well, the ones that we got from the county budget director that you said that those were the same, we just had to approve them again?
Correct. They sent us an email just yesterday. They are same, line item by line item, dollar for dollar. And they actually sent the, if I can find it here, Dr. Holman may have. Showed their approval. It was in with that email. That's right. Yes. I don't know if I have a copy of that.
That was in your research company?
Yes.
It was in here.
Yeah.
Here it is, it's in here.
That's on the IDEA now. We're getting closer. Let me find it here. Now here's a copy of the email that was sent. That's the debt service amendment, in which, right here's that amendment right behind it. Yeah, you should have a copy of it right there. And as far as the quarterly reports, yes, they are identical. Right here. They actually sent us a copy of the. Got a copy of it right there. That's the actual, okay, all right, that's the actual report that they asked that we approved tonight. And it's the same, identical, as our approval of last month. They just sent the sheet with it, where it had to be signed by the director and the chairman for accounting purposes. That's the only addition, that sheet that came with it for the signatures. The tags and signatures. Anything else? About this? If no other questions, we will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Is there a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Rick Dodson, and a second by Mr. Wayne Taylor. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On to our new business items. If anybody has objections, we'll do these the same way, we'll just take one blue folder for the new executive, for the new business. First on the new business item is approving the LA Quarterback Club to raffle or sell the existing bicycle seat at Tom Davis Field. Before the demolition takes place, Dr. Holman, could you please explain that? Or, no, let me, okay, it's easy.
Yeah, so Chris Hamm with the Quarterback Club, he brought it to my attention that, you know, looking for a fundraiser for the Quarterback Club, and some of those old blue seats up there may have some purposeful meaning to some folks, and they're gonna look at raffling off or selling those for like memorabilia for somebody if they wanna do it as a fundraiser.
And while we're speaking of this, if any items are raffled, schools are only allowed to have a raffle if it's approved through the state. So that paperwork has to go, and it's a process, but they can be sold for auction without going through that process. But if there is a raffle, it has to be approved through the state. Okay. Next, approval of Livingston Academy Football Field site plan. Don's here with us tonight. Don, you done?
Sure. Thank you all for having us tonight. I've got, we were here, of course, three weeks ago with the building committee, and at that time, we presented two options, and you gave us some feedback. And so we've gone back to the office and taken your comments, and have incorporated those comments into the plans that you see tonight. And I've got some small-scale plans for you to have. If you can take one and pass it down, for some extras. So that plan that you're passing down has got an updated site plan as well as an overall plan with proposed property line for purchase from the Mason family, as well as architectural plans that John and, I've got Haley with Coke here tonight. And so those updated plans are in the packet that you have. With me tonight is a member, Chelsea Hannan, with my firm. She's our lead civil designer, civil engineer, is here with me tonight. As well as Richmond Boone. Richmond is a Livingston Academy graduate and is a civil engineer student at Tennessee Tech. That, I met his mother and sister a year ago when we had some community meetings. Mike, if you remember, we presented this out for community feedback. His mother and sister, his sister is actually a senior at Livingston Academy this coming year, and is an athlete there. She's on the soccer team as well as is a track athlete. And so Richmond has contacted me about job shadowing as we work through this project this summer. So that he learns more about what civil engineering does. And so I thought that was a proper, a proper opportunity to have a graduate that has got some experience here on the campus to participate. And so we're glad to have Richmond spend some time with us this summer. So you'll see him as we come back monthly for updates to you. Richmond will be with us. He'll actually, as we do certain visits to the job site, will include him. And then we'll also, as we're looking through the drawing information with other design disciplines, we're going to invite Richmond to sit in those meetings. So that hopefully he'll see firsthand what a civil engineer, what a daily, what we do on a daily basis, and how we work through a project. Working with the architectural team, working with mechanical engineers, electrical engineers, and our in-house disciplines. So we thought this was a good opportunity. And I wanted you to know that one of your graduates will have to ask me to this project. So I'm gonna ask Chelsea to talk about the changes that we've made to the plans from your comments. And then after that, we'll talk about the architectural. And then we'll ask you to approve the concept plans with your comments incorporated into them.
So when we were at our meeting last, I know you guys expressed concern for the number of parking spaces over at the field house. We originally had some ADA spaces in that area. So, and you expressed the need to have more than what was there. So one thing we did, one of the major things, is moved the ADA spaces out from the field house parking. We were able to fit in forty regular parking spaces by the field house. And we'll be, have another, we still have those five ADA spaces we talked about coming off of this road. I know there was also some talk about some congestion along this road during the day, so there was some parking. So we've added some parallel parking along this access road. It will be making it wider, adding a little pavement to just get that parking off the road to keep traffic moving. And that way, it doesn't, hopefully, look a bobbly up right there. We're also able to extend this paint area behind the bleachers. We have bus parking available here for visiting teams, give them a place to go and park kind of out of the way. So we, those are the biggest site changes. We did add a ticket booth here. We didn't have that on there last time. And this is an ADA accessible ramp to the second floor of the building that we discussed. I'm gonna let Haley talk about the changes to the building floor plan itself. I know there was some discussion about that last time as well. As far as the site layout, the parking was the biggest change that we had from last time. So you want to talk about that?
Sure. My name's Haley McVanevol. I'm here on behalf of Co-Park Hexter and John Cheney. But yeah, since, just talking through the floor plan real quick. Everybody's familiar with this, has seen this on trial. But yeah, just based on some changes from what you guys talked through last time, I think on the ground level. So the, I think the main change was just, we added four feet of length on the building. And that was, that allowed us to make the concession areas a little bit larger. It allowed us to add these storage rooms, which were not there before on the previous sketch that you saw. We just kind of opened everything up a little bit, made it a little bit more roomy. You know, kind of, we had a little bit of space in these restrooms just for access and ease of movement around in there. And then also, like I said, we were able to open up this concession area a little bit, and the restroom and utility room. We also widened these areas a little bit for access into the restroom. So the restrooms are accessed here, and then also around the side here. So we widened this a little bit. I think the intent there was, for you guys, we're gonna have grills with concession stands kind of over on the side for each one. And so that allows a little bit more space there for movement and access to those. On the second floor, you know, we added that same four feet to the second floor as well, which allowed this event space to be a little bit larger. I know you guys have lots of things that are gonna be happening in there. I think we added, you know, an area back here for cabinetry in case we're, things like that. And then again, it just made everything a little bit, you know, opened everything up a little bit. I think, let's see. At the upper level, larger event space, larger event space storage, which I think was important for this, you know, the function of that space. And larger visitor team room, of course, and then storage here. So kind of just expanding a little bit based on what you guys need. And I think that's, that's about it for the changes since last time, so. Have any questions about, about anything?
Talking about the parking real quick. The ADA handicap parkings are, we still have room and parking accessibility for EMS and
Yes, so.
SROs that will be attending.
Yeah, so we've kept access. We can park right next to the field. And there's gates that, all around the field, there's gate access so that they can, if they need to get on the field or whatever. We've also provided a paved path all the way around the field. It's wide enough to drive a cart or a knee-beam or around. It's twenty feet. Most places, you've got eleven feet here. So that way, they have access, they're right there at it.
It's dropped off here. It says emergency venue parking. Gotcha, gotcha. I ask any questions? I think that's all we talked about.
So after you vote on this, let's take just a minute and talk about the size of the parcel for the Mason property. If you need to separate those two pieces of business.
Yes, if you don't find that a big area.
Yeah.
Let's run through just a few things real quick here, Don, we'll be right back. Our strategic plan, we need to consider approval of it. For those of you that emailed, there was an email copy sent to you. The hard copy was presented tonight. It is in your blue packet there. As we met, it covers our facilities and building operations, it covers our IP issues. What else is in that, Dr. Holman?
Special agents.
Correct. Facilities and building maintenance, special ed services, technology services to the students and staff.
to the students and staff, fiscal operations, and the IT also, I believe it's the IT, and also expansion of the virtual programs. That's the draft that Dr. Conne submitted to us, which she met with us. That is the actual hard copy. And now, we have, next item will be approval of reading of, first reading of these school board policies. Those, that stack policies that were handed out that night, that is those policies. Dr. Holman, it was his thing, I actually sat down and went through all those. If you'd explain that, Dr. Holman.
We took all these policies that TSBA had sent us. We all came in here and we went through those one at a time. And they were highlighted in yellow, the areas that needed revisions. The revisions were fairly simple. For instance, shouldn't say shall or will or maybe a date needed to be put in. Just some simple things like that. Anyway, we took our towns and we went through and tried to make all those corrections and submitted that.
And the majority of these are just to get up to date with legislature that has just closed. These are recommendations of TSBA. School board policies are 1.8011, which is emergency closings, 2.806, which is bids and quotes, 3.205, security, 3.211, new project planning, 3.220, access to private facilities, 4.101, 4.101, instructional standards, 4.204, summer instructional programs, 4.205, enrollment in advanced courses, 4.213, family life education, 4.301, interscholastic athletics, 4.605, graduation requirements, 4.7, testing programs, 5.106, application and employment, 5.802, qualifications and duties of director of schools, 5.117 is teacher tenure, 5.20 is separation practices for tenured teachers, 5.201 is separation practice for non-tenured teachers, 6.200 is attendance, 6.202 is home schools, 6.319 is alternative education, 6.402, physical exams and immunizations, 6.3 is code of conduct, 6.306 is interference and disruption of school activities. Like I said, all those have been updated and just supplied in all those that were handed out. Did Mr. Dobb get his?
I have his in my office to give to you.
Okay. Your copy of those policies, Dr. Holman, Dr. Dobb's. Dr. Holman has your copy of those policies.
Okay. Yeah, I've got those for you.
If there are no questions, if there are no other questions, we'll take a motion to approve the new business items. Is there a motion for that? Motion by Mr. Mike Hayes. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Bruce Hudgens. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any votes? Don, if you would, go ahead.
Sure. I think if you'll turn to the page in that packet that you received just a moment ago, it's got the track on it. You'll see two partial lines on here. One is, it's got the number of seventeen point nine acres. That is the property outs, that's a portion of the overall Mason track that will be necessary. That will do two things for you. It'll give you room for the future track whenever that is moved forward as a project, along with the soccer field and the roadway and some parking and some bleachers up beside it. And so it'll also give you back access to this county road that runs up behind the stadium on the current visitor's side. If, then we also added a second partial line in case of its future expansion, knowing that you've got the opportunity now to make that one-time purchase. So this, this will give you some more, three or acres that in case you're going to expand and put other facilities up here. I will say that we're gonna need some field dirt on the project for the stadium. Of course, when we cut out for the homicide bleachers, we'll have some field there, but we're gonna need some field at different places on the site. And so having this extra three acres gives us opportunity to rob field dirt on your property. If you decide, wherever, whether you decide to buy the seventeen point nine acres or the additional three point two, as a whole parcel, when we do our GAT technical work, we're gonna do some sampling on site to see the quality of the dirt on site to make sure that we can use and rob dirt here on site as opposed to needing to bring anything from on site. I do need to say that where the handicap parking is on the site plan that you're looking at now, we know that that's sort of been a sort of wet area in the past. I'm gonna do a boring there to see how deep that organic material is. In order to make that a good building path for that parking, we believe that we're gonna need to do some undercutting and put a shock rock pad there so that we'll stay in good shape going forward. But otherwise, all the other field dirt on site, I would leave required, I would like to be able to generate that here on the site and not have to pay for any import material. And so that's why, you know, there may be enough on this property, on just a seventeen point nine acres, but I feel good that, that having this additional three point two gives you two things. One, it gives you some ultimate build-out capacity in the future if there's other projects that you want as part of the campus, athletic campus. Two, it gives us a more opportunity to rob dirt, not only in this project, but also for the track. The track's gonna need quite a big rating. And so the ability to have the field dirt generated adjacent to it is a cost benefit to you. So.
I know in the original plan we looked at as far as the acreage, it had the bottom cutoff where the big hole was. And we had talked about coming straight down. Does that seventeen point nine come straight down?
It comes straight down, but it splits, it splits.
They go all the way to the existing property line, so it splits that pond.
Okay.
So if, if you don't want, they want to keep the line.
You adjust that line back a little bit.
Yeah, that may be some negotiations. Cutting that out, so we may have to look at that.
All this has been surveying.
Yeah, we surveyed the entire property. We surveyed not only the Mason property, we surveyed the Livingston Academy because our intent is to combine both these parcels into a single parcel at the end so we can do that bedding.
So based on this, the little shaded area here, is this the practice field?
Yes.
Yes.
So we, so according to that, the only part of the practice field that owned Dr. Mason is that little corner?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, Don, after, we just approved these site plans for the stadium and building. Is there anything else you need from us to move forward?
Not at this time. And so as we progress the design, there will be opportunities that we need input from you. So we'll either do that at a building committee, a special publicity committee, or at our monthly updates.
Very good. Anybody else have anything for the?
So if you, if you do have some changes that you wanna make on these proposed lines, as you talk with Dr. Mason and his family, certainly let us know so we can update this. This comes the base plan for your per acre price that you're gonna be purchasing.
Thank you. We also appreciate you bringing Mr. Boone along. We appreciate anybody that can come to Livingston Academy to be part of our process.
Absolutely, absolutely. So you'll, you'll see him over the next few months this summer before he goes back to school tech. But also this summer, he'll be a day or two in our office as we're working with the other engineers and architects. So if he understands the process that we go through on a project.
He was always a fine student. We do really appreciate it.
Okay, yes, sir. We certainly appreciate him and his ability to reach out to us to, thank you so much.
Thank you. While we're on this, I know we're sitting all urgent, but while we're on this topic, does anything, does anybody have any issues with Dr. Holman being in contact with Dr. Mason? I would recommend that since Mr. Hayes has been the biggest part of this process, that he and Dr. Holman meet with Dr. Mason and go from there going forward. I mean, we can do it as a group, but getting everybody together as a group isn't always the easiest thing to do. Anything, as we all know, anything that will transpire has to be voted on as part of the meeting. So does anybody have any issues with those two meeting with Dr. Mason to progress forward or look into the possibilities for this? I'm over here with all CBA. I'm not sending her. If number one has anything else or any other questions, we entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion for that, motion by Mike Hayes, second by Mr. Dobb. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any votes? Okay. Anybody need to take a quick break or just go ahead? Good, good. All right, on to our work session. Dr. Holman?
At this time, I'd like to, I'm always, I always find great enjoyment in bragging on someone that's gone above and beyond, whether it be a teacher, a student, whoever it may be. And I'd like, at this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Kelly Smith and also Tommy Johnson, that he wasn't able to be here tonight, and Doug Smith, the principal at Livingston Middle School, for their efforts in organizing the Special Olympics event for Overton County. And that was back from the day of eighteen. And this event was, was a huge success and it saw participation from not only local organizations, but it also received attention from the, from the representatives from the Special Olympics of Tennessee, along with the Manchester City Police Department. So they were all here that day. And the Manchester City Police Department works really, excuse me, works really closely with the Special Olympics. Students from pre-K through twelve participated in a variety of events and they were honored at a medal ceremony. So these students, they received their medals. It was, it was really a big deal to those students and we're really proud of each one of them. The day was an excellent example of different people coming together for an important cause. And, and all three of you, although Mr. Johnson's not here, I'd like for you, the two of you that are here to come forward, I have a little something for you on behalf of the school board. But we really appreciate what you've done for the students in Overton County though.
Did you want a picture? As Dr. Holman said, we do appreciate you guys and we do thank you for your work. I know Mr. Johnson bounced back and forth between schools, but I think he sets up shop over there at Dunleavy's. But thanks, guys. We do appreciate you. Does anybody else have anything for discussion?
I got one thing. I guess about a year longer ago, we talked about the JRL TC program at the high school. I had Perry reach back out to me and ask if we can kind of bring that up again and look at it. I know I did some research on it in the past and it said that I think we had to have a minimum of a hundred students that would be willing to participate. There was some details, I forgot half of them, but I know the, like US Army paid for half the salaries and provided all the uniforms and everything. And at one time we did a survey and out to all the high school and maybe seventh, eighth grade upcoming to kind of see what the interest would be. So maybe if we can do another survey, just to see what the interest would be. And if we have some close to that hundred, then maybe we start kind of digging into that again and look at the possibility of starting that program at the high school.
Was that one of the ones where you also, they only had so many programs, you had to go on a waiting list until you had?
Yeah, you guys fill out an application and go on a waiting list. And if they're full, then one drops below the attendance and falls off and you can get on. So it could be a long process. Or there could be openings now. I don't know that. But I think it would be a good opportunity to bring that to Livingston Academy. We could do that.
We'll look into that.
Just like thank all of our retirees for all the work they've done all the years.
And I'd like to thank the Bank of Overton County for letting us use their facilities for fire plan. They did a great job out there.
I hate to correct, I hate to correct anybody on the main one. It's named one by.
One main.
Yes. They did a very good job taking care of us. Excellent job. We appreciate what they did. It was more than we asked for and it was great.
I do want to say what was already mentioned. I want to say it again too. That was a, that was a really good group of people that retired. And I would just like to thank them for all that they've done throughout all the years for the students of Overton County.
In your packet, there was also some information, some attendance information that was in that folder as well, just for, just for your knowledge, just for those to keep up with that. Thanks, guys. Everybody have a good evening. Next month, our meeting will be back on normal scheduled time. So Dr. Holman and myself, we will, should have the facts out as normal time. Next week. Next week, yes, pretty close. So we'll do it as fast as we can. To my knowledge, we don't have anything we're waiting on to be sent out. Do you know? No. So like I said, I apologize for the delay this month, but we waited as long as we possibly could. I still want to go. Thank you. Thanks, guys. Thank you.